Calling the commission meeting of Tuesday, March 4th, 2014 at 6:30. We will open our meeting tonight with invocation by myself and a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Merkel.
Thank you.
Let us all stand. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to serve. We ask you now to bless this commission, open up our minds, give us wisdom, give us courage, give us the inspiration, guide our hearts in our decision that it may be for the better ment of the city and its citizens. Father, we pray that the spirit of Mardi Gras was spread throughout this land. We thank you, Lord, for your many blessings. We give you all the praise and all the honor. In our Savior's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the world, with its chances on a nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. At this time, let's have the roll call. He's in Tallahassee for League of Cities. Here.
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. If you would, with me now, let's state our brand statement. It's time to take a look at Boynton Beach. Boynton Beach serves up waterfront dining, bondi shopping, and lively entertainment. Thank you, thank you. Now for agenda approval. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr., I'd like to add something for future agenda. I'd like to bring up the subject of sober houses here in Boynton Beach. It's something that we haven't talked much about. I know there's a lot going on in the outer communities around Boynton, and I'd hate to see us, they're pushing back pretty strongly on these placements of sober houses, and I wouldn't like to see Boynton Beach become the dumping ground for it. I know right now up in Tallahassee, in the senate, in the house, there's bills being talked about and probably going to be passed on it, but I think we should get out in the forefront before we get rolled over. So I'd like to have that put on some future, on our future agenda.
We shall take note.
Thank you.
I also would like to add one for future discussion, and that is the guidelines that we have for running for mayor versus running for city commission. What I mean by that basically is that after two terms, whether you are mayor or commissioner, you can't run for another office. What I would like to see us discuss in the future is the idea of after you've served your two terms as a commissioner, that you be allowed to run for mayor, and that would be a discussion. We'll add those to future discussion. Any others?
May I comment on that?
No, not yet. We're going to discuss that. I'm just adding to the future agenda. No discussion now.
Well, I was going to say, I agree.
Seeing no other, move for adoption of the minutes of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passed unanimously. Information or items begin to my right with Commissioner Fishpatrick.
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Joe Cessello.
Disclosure, I had a meeting with Maria Hamburger and a Mark Fuller of the Margana, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, company. He's an executive manager for his construction firm, and I met with those two individuals and we had a little chat. Just like to say that Tuesday, next Tuesday at this time, there is going to be an election here in Boynton Beach. The candidates have worked very hard trying to get the voters out there, and just spread the word. Tell your neighbors, tell your family, please, get out and vote if you live in District Two and Four. We, as candidates, we appreciate it, so thank you.
Commissioner Merkel.
I'd like to reinforce what Commissioner Cessello just said. I am literally 25 pages away from finishing the book on Harry S Truman. And the reason I'm bringing this up is that he was the biggest surprise probably in American history as far as being a victor in an election. And it was really very simple. He worked hard, he spoke to the people, the people got to know him. Next week, March 11th, is an election, and the people, I hope, will come out to vote simply and to the point and realize that I believe we're all trying our very best, but voting confirms whether or not we are. So please come out to vote, and vote, and get your friends to come out to vote, because in simple language, that's the American way.
Go back to Commissioner.
Just real quick, I just noticed there Chief Carter. Most of us went to the Boynton Beach Fire Paramedics Award Ceremony, and this is a thing they do once a year to, and they give individual awards to the people who protect us day in and day out, 24/7, 365 days a year. And Chief, I was proud to be there, and you did a great job, so thank you.
I have a, I remembered a couple of things. A couple Thursdays ago, I went to the Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting, and that was very educational. And the day after that, we went, they had a reception for the Community Caring Center, and a few of us went to that, and that was educational also. And then on Saturday, there was the South Florida K-9 Competition, and most of us went there for an hour or two till the sun got too hot, and that was pretty interesting. And last Wednesday, we had the forum on pension, educational forum on pensions, and some ideas on possibly making some changes to make it more sustainable in the long term, and it was a good first step. And on Friday, I met with County Commissioner Jess Santa Maria about the four and a half acres of county land that the city is going to try to buy for an extension of Lake Ida Park, and he was, you know, nobody's going to make a commitment, but it sounded positive. And then the day after that was the opening of the East Boynton Little League, and that was a rite of spring, and it was a good day, and a lot different from most of the rest of the country. And that's it.
Okay, just a few items that I'd like to mention that has not already been mentioned. We did have the South Central Regional Wastewater Treatment Disposal Board Quarterly Meeting on Thursday, the 20th of February. Also, that's cute. Also, on Saturday, the 22nd, I attended the St. John's Presbyterian Baptist 100th Anniversary that was held at the Intercoastal Clubhouse here in Boynton Beach, and they all could not believe the beautiful scenery that we have there, that, at that Intercoastal Clubhouse, something that we sometimes take for granted. Also, on Wednesday, the 26th, we had the Palm Beach County League of City Board of Directors, as well as the General Meeting that was held at the Delray Marriott, down in Delray, and that was, a lot of information was shared. Going back to what Commissioner Fitzpatrick stated on March 1st, on Saturday, I was in a parade that helped to celebrate the West Boynton Little League. They were celebrating their 20th anniversary celebration in conjunction with the 75th anniversary of Little League itself. And I was very impressed by the number of kids. They must have had over 600 kids that were involved. Very well organized, very, very impressive. On yesterday, Monday, at 9:00 a.m., I listened in on the League of Cities Legislative Call In. That is a once-a-month activity where you dial in and you get updates on the House and Senate bills as to the status of where they are. Very informative. I would like to encourage all of our commissioners and the mayor to tune in when possible. I believe the Assistant City Manager Carice LaJune also was on that conference call, were you not?
Yes, sir, I was.
Very good. Hearing no other, I will close that, and that takes us down to item three. Announcement, announcement by the Recreation and Parks Director, Wally Majors, regarding their spring and summer events which will be held at Intercoastal Park on Saturday, March 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Wally Majors, Recreation Parks Director, the third Saturday of every month, as part of our ongoing series of events at our parks, the Play Outdoors Unplugged series. We are hosting the Spring into Summer Event at Intercoastal Park. The actual time is from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. We're going to have activities for the entire family. I know the Vice Mayor loves to rock climb, so we're going to have the rock climbing wall for you, sir. The bounce house, the relays, the face painting, and one really exciting thing is that those people who are ready to register their children for summer camps will have an opportunity to do so, although it's March, believe me, if you wait too long, you will find it hard to find a spot. And we're going to, we're going to offer a $25 early bird discount for those people who wish to register. We look forward to seeing you. It's March 15th at Intercoastal Park Clubhouse.
What do I get if I make it all the way to the top?
We'll give you a special coupon for a good hug or something. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you, Wally.
A hernia belt.
I used to like you. That takes us down to item 3B. Proclaim March 22nd, 2014 as All People's Day with Susan Berkowitz-Swartz, founder and president of All People's Day, will accept the proclamation. I'll come down. Whereas by the year 2060, European Americans would no longer constitute the majority of the United States population and people from different cultures in Boynton Beach, and all over the United States would be interacting with one another more often than ever before. And the facets to a communal nature of the community are awareness, understanding, and acceptance. And whereas in 1973, Susan Berkowitz-Swartz, MPS, ATR-BC, established All People's Day, a multicultural and issue-based holiday, which is presently a 501(c)(3) nonprofit public charity that helps children, adults, and seniors see and embrace the beauty of their diversity through the arts, and bring about awareness of the unique attributes and others leading to mutual respect. And whereas, the theme of All People's Day is discovering our connections, because throughout the world, and even in our own nation and schools, there have been tragic incidents against people who are different. All People's Day addresses this by giving the people of all ages and walks of life fun and creative ways to explore positive connection by means of educational programs, craft kits, and festivals that teach about diversity. And whereas, this year's fifth Florida Free Festival will be held on Saturday, March 22nd, at Pompeii Park in Delray Beach. And whereas, the city of Boynton Beach urges all citizens to appreciate the universal qualities at our core and the differences that help make us individuals. Now therefore, I, Woodrow Hay, on behalf of Jared Taylor, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2014 as All People's Day. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and called the Seal of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed to Boynton Beach, Florida, the fourth day of March, 2014. Congratulations.
Thank you, Boynton Beach, for this wonderful proclamation. The means, this means that Florida cities are recognizing our aim of connecting different groups of people and building a better world. What better way to work through the, than work through the arts, because the arts really touches people's hearts. The Free All People's Day Diversity Festival is co-sponsored by All People's Day, Inc., and the National Coalition of 100 Black Women in South Palm Beach County. Dorothy Lowry, one of your own Boynton Beach residents, is part of our group, and you're invited to the festival, everybody here and everyone in Boynton Beach. Again, it's March 22nd, Saturday, just less than three weeks away, and we're going towards it. The main events are from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There'll be 20 dazzling performers, performers, performers of dance, music, and social theater spanning the globe are on the stage. In every 15 minutes, another group comes up. So if you come for an hour, you will get to see at least three different groups. These beautifully costumed artists, I'll give you an example of some of them. Chinese performing dancers, Rising Phoenix Middle Eastern dancers, the Delray Community Choir, which is an interfaith gospel singers, Jewish culture performers, kids puppet show from the Puppetry Arts Center, the South Florida Taiko Drummers, these huge drums, you know, that are really cool, Drake Irish dancers that are really popular, Alexanders Star, which is a hip-hop group fellow, and Pink Slip Folk Dancing, the Delray Divas, I can go on, there's 20 different ones, but you can see the variety. We have 50 interactive and merchandise booths that'll feature a diverse mix to see and do for the whole family. You'll find art projects for kids such as origami peace cold, peace folding, peace crane folding, family mural painting, and puppet making, and a real puppet stage for the kids to try out. So things to connect with other people at the festival and to learn about for all ages. There'll be, for the adults, we have a lot of nonprofits that will be doing word games, and there'll be a health fair. Artwork will be sold, jewelry, mouth-watering, international cuisine, a whole array of things. Prior to this, there's a free workshop from 9:30 to 11:00 for, that'll teach children about, we're all made from the same materials and should therefore be treated with equal respect. And it's a craft that they can come to, it's free, and all they have to do is give me a call, and I will put, sign them up, or they can come that day. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
If I could get Kalen to come and stand to receive this proclamation.
I need you to go far.
And the Chief, Ray Carter. Proclamation. Whereas fighting fires is one of the most hazardous professions, requiring physical strength, stamina, extensive training courage, and selfless concern for the welfare of our citizens. And whereas, in addition to their daily service to our communities, firefighters throughout the state and across the nation have joined the Muscular Dystrophy Association for the past 59 years in the fight against neuromuscular diseases. And whereas, Florida firefighters collected more than $1.3 million in over 300 communities, including Boynton Beach Fire Rescue Local 1891, who raised more than $28,000 with their 2013 Fill the Booth Campaign for the MDA, again making them the MDA's largest source of funding. And whereas, the Muscular Dystrophy Association is extremely grateful of the City of Boynton Beach firefighters for their support and dedication, and the funds collected by the City of Boynton Beach firefighters assist the MDA in providing, providing medical services at local clinics, summer camps, research grants, support groups, and public education seminars at no cost to local children and families. And whereas, in honor of the efforts of the City of Boynton Beach firefighters, the Muscular Dystrophy Association is sponsoring the Boynton Beach Firefighters Appreciation Month. And it is appropriate for all City of Boynton Beach citizens to join the Muscular Dystrophy Association in this tribute to our firefighters. Now therefore, I, Woodrow Hay, on behalf of Jared Taylor, the Mayor Jared Taylor, by virtue and authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, hereby proclaim March 4th, 2014 as the City of Boynton Beach Firefighters Appreciation Month. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and called the Seal of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed to Boynton Beach, Florida, on March 4th, 2014. Congratulations.
Thank you all for approving this proclamation and giving the firefighters the honor that they deserve, and of course, thank you all for helping them reach that $28,000 last year, and this year the goal is $30,000, so we will certainly need all of your help. But especially on behalf of the families and the children that the MDA serves, we so appreciate your support. As mentioned, the firefighters are our greatest source of funding, bringing in the most, and most people are familiar with the disease called ALS, Lou Gehrig's disease, but actually the most common disease that we cover is Duchenne, which is typically diagnosed in boys at about age two, and the life expectancy used to be early teens. Thanks to the funds that the firefighters have raised for us throughout the years, we have added 10 years onto the lives of those little boys. So thank you again, especially to the fire department and Chief Carter.
Thank you, Ray Carter. I'm lucky enough to be the fire chief of the firefighters that they're talking about in that proclamation. Again, this year our goal is $30,000. Last year we had a very good year, we raised a whole lot more than we did the year before in just over $28,000. We'll be out on the street corners for three consecutive Fridays and Saturdays later on this month, beginning 14 and 15 March, and then 21 and 22, and then 28 and 29. And all five of our stations will be out there collecting, give them a wave, stop, drop a dollar in the boot, drop the change that's in your, what used to be an ashtray in the car, they don't even put those in the cars anymore. I'm dating myself a bit here, but, you know, whatever you can give, we appreciate that, and it all adds up to an awful lot of funds that go a long way to help the Muscular Dystrophy Association do a lot of research to eliminate all of our neuromuscular diseases. So thank you very much to Boynton Beach for being a very special place that always gives what they can to this great fundraising event. Thank you.
There's one more proclamation or recognition. Like I said, I went to the Palm Beach Metropolitan Organization, and they said, "Where's Woodrow? We're expecting Woodrow. We have this plaque for him." So I said, "Okay, I'll, I'll make sure he gets it." So it's, would you like to come back and get your plaque? It says, "Palm Beach Metropolitan Planning Organization Certificate of Appreciation and Recognition of Service as an MPO Board Member, Presented to Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay, City of Boynton Beach." Yeah, I'm full of surprise. On a personal note, I really enjoyed working with yous last year, and I'd like to give you this commemorative letter, I mean, card holder.
Well, thank you.
Oh, it is? Well, that explains why there were your cards in it.
Yeah. That looks familiar. Thank you.
He lost it a couple of weeks ago.
Let us continue on with our agenda. That takes us down to public audience. Individuals will be able to speak on any subject that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes to make your speech.
Good evening. David Cat, 67 Midwood Lane, Our Fair City. On February 11th, 2014, I submitted the following public records request. Any and all correspondence, notes, and emails between Commissioner Merkel and the city manager of Designee and Human Resources, and the same between the city manager and Human Resources concerning any, any appropriate behavior of Commissioner Merkel towards any female employee of the city, including any notes during any counseling session with Commissioner Merkel. On February 19th, I received an email from the city clerk stating, "This is to revise that the city of Boynton Beach has no records that are responsive to your request." I really didn't expect there to be any written record of any counseling given to Mr. Merkel. I, as well as others, have been told by people of impeccable character and resource that verbal counseling was in fact given to Mr. Merkel by either the city manager's office, Human Resources, or both. The counseling was related to inappropriate behavior and derogatory comments towards several female employees of the city. I cannot understand why such unseemly behavior, whether it be comments, touching, or both, would be swept under the rug and not allowed to be made public. So is history repeating itself? Didn't we elect candidates whose word was their bond? Who has been served by having, who has been served by having these incidents swept under the rug and not brought forth for commission action? The city's image has suffered greatly from renegade commissioners who displayed their personal lives in detailed police reports, personal vendettas against employees, and intimate proclivities in the public realm. The failure to honor the sanctity of public office and not having proper respect for the citizens who elected them is nothing short of gross misconduct in search of using the office for personal gain. It is my understanding, as well as that of others, that the victims of the tasteless behavior fostered by Mr. Merkel have been reticent about coming forward for fear of repercussions. I would suggest that if subpoenaed for deposition, either the staff members who counseled Mr. Merkel or the victims would choose to commit perjury. Author John Scousie said, and I quote, "If your flirting strategy is indistinguishable from harassment, it's not everyone else's, it's not everyone else that's the problem." Mr. Merkel. Mr. Merker, your embarrassment to this commission, to the City of Boynton Beach, and to the community of Hunter's Run, so compound this latest revelation along with your state ethics violations and a fine of $750 for failure to disclose your personal financial interests is reliving a nightmare the city no longer wants, and you should resign. Again, here is your quote from the Palm Beach Post on March 9, 2013, on why you ran for office. "David Merker is committed to bringing ethics back to our city. Sir, you've completely failed and need to resign from public office immediately. Leave on your own or let this commission take the proper action. Your need to personally attack me has been a deflection from the focus of yourself. So please be assured, Mr. Merker, I am neither ignorant, stupid, or un-American. Reputation is fragile, and yours is totally flawed." Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Members of the Commission, it's a privilege to meet you. My name is Kenneth Churchill. I'm a national organizer for homeless families and individuals. I'm here tonight with a Boynton Beach Commission Resolution, which essentially is an every-town resolution. Some people have been replaced by machines. Millions are homeless. The national policy with respect to homeless people is passive euphunasia. If a woman is homeless, she has lost her right to land. If a man is homeless, he has lost his right to land. Being forced to live without shelter causes the natural consequence of unnatural death. The homeless are surviving somewhere on the land anyway. It is the responsibility of society to organize this basic fact of life. Five to eight acres of land is enough land to revolve every homeless family in Boynton Beach. Homeless people would own the land in common, same as Indian reservations. This plan is a compromise between the taxpayer, the homeless people, downtown merchants, and the state, known as the Rust Belt Compromise. American homeless land model is a plan at no cost to the taxpayer, no cost to the state, and at no cost to the downtown merchant. The City of Boynton Beach finds itself in abundant wealth and could easily afford to give five to eight acres of land to the homeless. The homeless would be required to keep the peace at all times or forfeit the land right. Ultimately, American homeless land model is an effort to establish one homeless land reservation in each county of the United States. In addition to that goal, any municipality can choose to create a homeless reservation adjacent to that municipality as a civil defense for the people, located on the least valuable land ordinarily near the county or municipal dump. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm from New York and Florida. In Woodstock, we have the first turning point in American history where the city, the town of Woodstock, is considering giving some land to the homeless. First in the nation, we've gotten that far. Please read it. Next, you'll find a Senate bill which is used as a fast-track example so that the commission can speed through the concept and have a greater understanding. Finally, and last attachment, is a letter to Honorable Maria Sacks asking for state legislation to create a homeless land reservation for each county in the state of Florida. Thank you very much. May I give this to the clerk?
Yeah, just leave it there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Edwards, 629 Northeast 9th Avenue. And good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff, and Citizens. I'm unfortunately in Tallahassee myself for the next commission meeting, and I wanted to make it a point to stop by tonight, Vice Mayor Hay, and make sure I took the time to thank you for your service to District 2, to this city, in a way that hopefully means a little bit of something, but especially for the record. You have been an incredible public servant, as far as I'm concerned. When it comes to ethic, I think in Webster, they probably have your name in there. You are the epitome of ethics for the Boynton Beach Commission. Through some of the darkest times, at least in my 16 years here, you have stood out above all the others. You supported issues we haven't always agreed on everything, but the one thing that I'm proudest of you for is you've always stood above the BS in one of the darkest periods that I can imagine. I call it the perfect storm. And I have really appreciated that, and most anybody I know in this entire county has appreciated that someone rose above everything. You stood up for the children's museum when I was there, along with others, but certainly you stood up for the old high school and others have. Lord only knows where that'll continue to go, but I've appreciated it when I've stood up here and you've supported. You supported Lisa Bright when nobody else really would, or if you would, whether it was on the commission or elsewhere, which was an incredible disservice to her in my mind, based on all the circumstances at the time. I always appreciated that. But most importantly, you just stood above, and you did it with dignity, rational thinking, and you always held to your morals, your Christianity, and to me, that is more powerful than anything. So thank you for everything you've done for the City of Boynton Beach, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
My name is Janet DeVries, 806 Winward Way. I'm the president of the Boynton Beach Historical Society. The society has enjoyed a rich history with the City of Boynton Beach, beginning with our adoption of the Florida Room at the Boynton Beach City Library in 1968. Over the years, the partnership has grown to include a myriad of wonderful community projects, such as Kids Kingdom Playground, Revitalization of the 1913 Schoolhouse Museum, Interpretive Signage at J.C. Park, Installation of the Florida Heritage Marker at the Boynton Inlet, and most recently, the Downtown Heritage Trail with Warren Adams, the city's historic preservation planner. The Historical Society recognizes and applauds the efforts of the city commission and city staff in promoting and preserving history. Tonight, I'm pleased to present copies of the newly digitized History of Boynton Beach film. First recorded for the nation's bicentennial in 1976, the film has been digitally remastered with an introduction by Harvey Oyer III, descendant of one of South Florida's earliest pioneers. The DVD contains a special behind-the-scenes look at the making of the film by Tom Warnke, son of the original film's visionary and former Boynton Mayor, James Warnke. The film will air on the city's TV station, BBTV. It's available to borrow at the city library, and copies are available from the Historical Society. Thank you, and I'm pleased to present the commission with a copy of the DVD.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Ginger Peterson, 7817 Manor Forest Lane. Just wanted to give you all a quick update on where we are with Dewey Park. As you recall, last fall, you had the great vision to rename that park in honor of the Deweys, and I have here a photograph of Mrs. Dewey's great-great-niece and her great-great-great-niece as they visited Boynton Beach in November, and I presented them with the plaque, which was kind of a surprise as we were in Dewey Park. So I'll give that to you all to hand around. Then an extra special thing I have for you, this just came out this week, and it's in celebration of Women's History Month, and that's all of Mrs. Dewey's works republished. We've done a major mailing campaign to all the professors around the state because we believe that her pioneer literature and her early stories of Florida will be of great study to those in the literary field. So we wanted you to also enjoy those stories. If you like cats and dogs and our old stories of Palm Beach County, I think you'll enjoy this book very much. So that's just a quick message, and I'll give these out to you and pass around this photograph. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
This is history. This is like Christmas. Should I read this before I read Isadora?
Good evening. Ron Washam, 127 South Atlantic Drive West, Boynton Beach. As a lifetime citizen of Boynton, as a person that first entered not these chambers, but a much smaller city hall, as a youth and government representative in 1972 from Boynton Beach Junior High School, I've had the pleasure of watching commissions in my 35 years of being active come and go in the City of Boynton. And I rise tonight to echo what my friend, and sometimes we're compared to Talking Head Brothers, Brian Edwards, just said. In all the years that I've been involved, there has never been a mayor or a commissioner that I have respected more than Vice Mayor Woodrow Hay. And I've had the pleasure of working, or opposing, or trying to compromise with a good number of them. And you, sir, to quote our other commissioner, you are the Harry Truman of all the commissioners that I have watched over the years. You brought civility back. You brought kindness and compassion where it lacked for a very long time. And again, it was nothing new. I'd seen the pendulum swing back and forth, but you were steady as a rock. It has been my honor to work with you, to support you, and to watch your progress as a leader in our city. And I am so very, very proud, Vice Mayor Hay. You will always be my mayor, always.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dr. Peter Blas, 113 West Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida 33436. To begin with, I would like to say something about Woodrow Hay and also remember Reverend Cheney. I think the two of them strike me as essentially saints of Boynton Beach, people who understand and love this city and love this country. And I'm sure Reverend Cheney is watching us from heaven and agreeing with me today. And I hope, Woodrow Hay, it ain't over. You know we'll be working together on many projects. I think, I hope, in fact, whether I run or not, that you will end up running for mayor in 2016. I hope you win, or otherwise, it'll be good competition to have. Now, a couple of other things. One is, I always report to you, this is the only chance I have every two weeks, on the progress of the University of Boynton or Ulam University. I'll spend about 45 seconds. We are now entering a large project dealing with energy. We are very seriously studying the Gulf Stream, the energy available from the Gulf Stream. This is not a pipe dream. Florida Atlantic University is experimenting with a turbine in Fort Lauderdale this summer. And if it goes well, I think we will try to organize a source of very efficient, wonderful energy for this city that could have all kinds of effects, including improving the budget. So I will slow down and repeat. We are the closest place to the Gulf Stream, and we are uniquely qualified to get energy from the Gulf Stream. A bit of a science fiction, just to make everybody curious. In yesterday's paper, they wrote a visionary idea to slow down hurricanes. I don't know how many of you saw it in The Sentinel. It was studied at Stanford University, and it is decades into the future, but by installing a set of giant windmills, they hoped to slow down a hurricane. I think that would be kind of cool for Boynton, if that happened. So in conclusion, I just want to say, God bless you, Woodrow Hay, God bless Boynton, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Eric George, 248 Main Boulevard. How fitting. Talk about the right man for the right times. Mayor Hay, Vice Mayor Hay, Commissioner Hay, you did all of those things with grace and dignity. You saw our city through one of the most tumultuous times in the history of Boynton Beach. From an administrative standpoint, from the heinous crimes that we had, you healed the city. You brought unity that wasn't there before, getting, as you promised me a long time ago, getting the chamber, the CRA, and the city all on the same page, working together with the Business Development Board. We are poised for greatness because of the guts and the will that you showed and the true leadership. You didn't talk it, you did it. You went out and you led by example. Every department of this city, you went and spent time working with them, to the point of even being on the garbage trucks. And trust me, the staff remembered it, and the citizens remembered it. And if they didn't remember it, I want to make sure that it's part of the public record because you went above and beyond so many others. And I have a tremendous amount of respect for our Mayor Jerry Taylor and other mayors that we've had, Mayor Broning and others, in my time in the city, and those that came before. But you led by example. You led and healed this city. You got the churches and the synagogues on the same pages when it came to being anti-violence and having safer streets and safer neighborhoods. We reduced crime for six years in a row, by double digits in many of those years. Why? Because you pushed the police to make the arrest, get the convictions, and clean up the neighborhoods. And we got to continue that. We are far from done, and you are still going to be involved. You are going to be our newest member on the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee, and we welcome you to that committee. You are going to be truly a senior statesman, and we haven't seen the last of Woodrow Hay's involvement in this great city. And I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you. I see no further of a closed public comment. Let me just say that many of you know that I am ordained minister, and it's just part of my belief that the God that I serve would have me here at such a time as this. It wasn't by accident, it was by divine choice that I was at the helm at the time where we needed, whatever services I provided. I want to thank all of you, God bless you, and before we go to administrative, let me say that the city commission, there will be a city commission candidate forum on Thursday, March 6, 2014, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Boynton Beach City Library, right across the street over here. There are flyers that are on the table in the rear, and we also have flyers that are in Spanish, for those of you who speak Spanish. So we have both. Please get those announcements and govern yourself accordingly. Thank you. That takes us down to Item 5A Administrative, which I went through, and we don't have any that I could see. So that takes us over to Consent Agenda. There was nothing that was pulled from Consent Agenda, so that's completed, and that takes us all the way. Do we need a motion? Do we need, yeah, yeah.
Can I just comment on, all right?
No, you didn't pull it.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
They moved in the second. End of discussion?
All I want to do is reinforce its eye on the Consent Agenda dealing with author J. Gallagher Risk Management. I know the company personally through doings, being in the insurance field. It's a credible company. The only thing is, I think it was February...
The only thing is, I think it was February where we get 30 or 45 days interim notice to see if there's any competitive rates. I think this is something we have to constantly be aware of. Insurance is not a pleasantry today. It's a true expense. So just wanted to confirm and just comment, let's constantly see if there's any competitive prices every time the contract is coming near.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All are false? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us all the way down. That's it. There are no other items on the agenda. Help me to repeat that. No, we're not going to read the future. You can read those on y'all. Let us repeat our closing brand statement. Catch a wave, catch a fish, catch a breath, breeze is in the Boynton Beach. America's gateway to the Gulf Stream. We stand to join.